Well deserved. This is incredible. He was so involved with this community and for it to be here, it's perfect.
All honors come in due time. I wish we had done this years ago, but I'm so happy we're doing it today.
He's a Grammy winner, but he's also, in my opinion, the producer, writer, and musician and singer on the greatest album in music history, What's Going On? That album is still relevant today, so Marvin's music and his legacy is timeless.
This is a guy whose music was before his time. If you play a lot of his songs that are 25, 35-years-old, they have messages that work for today.
His music is more relevant today than ever. He's saying, "What's going on with our air? With the fish are dying? What is happening with the hate in the world? What's going on?"
He has a message in his music. He gives you that inspiration, no matter what you're going through. You find some kind of way to come together with peace and love with his music.
He was my hero. He was my hero all my life. To describe Marvin, Marvin was a very complicated man. Genius, sweet, kind, oh my God, loving. Marvin was a little bit of everything. I'd just like to say thank you, everybody, for loving my brother so much. He would look around and he would say how sweet it is to be loved by you.
What a loving tribute from his little sister. You can visit the Marvin Gaye post office at 3585 South Vermont Avenue, adjacent to USC. That's not the only tribute we have for you this week. Council President Herb Weston was a special honoree at the NAACP Theater Awards. The stars were out in full force on the red carpet for the event.
People that actually do work in the city, especially in the city of Los Angeles, in the film industry, Herb has just been, you know, he's iconic. He's known for it. So tonight is his night as well.
Seeing what he's done and continues to do in the community.
Together, we can do more. So we gotta unite and we gotta move forward, and not so much for us, but for our children and our children's children.
With television, I'm able to say, "Cut, edit, let me do it again." And the amount of talent that you must possess in order to be onstage, in my opinion, is amazing.
I think this theater is something we should never, ever lose. It's kind of disappearing in certain places, but it's the foundation of all great acting, I think, theater actors.
It's very important to sort of understand that the only medias are not TV and film, that there is an interaction between an audience and actors onstage that's vital to, I mean, it's the oldest form of entertainment.
Having Lonnie Love call you iconic is pretty nice, right? We turn now to LGBT Heritage Month in Los Angeles, where City Hall leaders honor exemplary LGBT citizens from each council district. Gil Reyes has more.
City Hall erupted in song in celebration of LGBT Heritage Month. The Unity Fellowship Church Choir performed. Their openly gay Archbishop Carl Bean could not attend, but was among the honorees.
A diverse collection of who Los Angeles is and who Los Angeles is at its best.
The LA City Council honored LGBT movers and shakers like Lori Jean. Jean is the CEO of the Los Angeles LGBT Center, a safe haven for youth and seniors.
Many of you have been champions of our community in our quest to build a world where LGBT people thrive as healthy, equal, and complete members of society. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our staff, our volunteers, and most of all, our clients, thank you so much for this wonderful honor.
Also recognized actor Bex Taylor-Klaus. The actor is helping gender non-binary people gain acceptance.
My hope for the next generation of queer folk is that they live their lives as authentically as possible.
Outside City Hall, each city council office recognized an outstanding LGBT person in their district. Honoree Steven Simon is Executive Director of the city's Department on Disability.
Look, I'm just thankful that for a lot of my career, I was able to get a paycheck to do the work I love, which is fighting for community. I'm so honored to be among the honorees today and among all of you.
From honorees to exhibits, this one at LA City Hall's Bridge Gallery dispels the myth that the LGBTQ+ flag is just one rainbow flag. In fact, there are several of them, 23 just in this gallery.
Openly gay council member Mitch O'Farrell presented his True Colors exhibit. Here's a Pansexual Pride Flag. Pansexuals are attracted to people regardless of the person's sex or gender identity. And check out the Gender Fluid Pride Flag. Gender fluid people remain flexible about their identity.
Even most of us in the LGBT community don't realize the breadth that exists of representation and identity. Identity is so important. You know, if someone doesn't see themselves represented somewhere in mainstream society, they feel isolated and alone.
We are proud of the many people who made sacrifices for the progress that we have achieved today. We're proud of this great city that we live in, but we are also very committed to continuing to advance LGBTQ rights, and not until everybody has them can we rest.
Thanks, Gil. You can check out all 23 Pride Flags at the City Hall Bridge Gallery through the end of June. You didn't think we'd only cover one Pride event, did you? Let's check out the inaugural Pride on the Port in San Pedro.
Happy Pride!
Welcome. Come on, enjoy it.
It's the first Pride on the Port of Los Angeles, so being a part of anything in a community that it's the first time is monumental. And San Pedro's ready for it. They need a celebration like this.
It's important to have the inaugural Pride on the Port here in San Pedro to make sure people feel that they are welcome regardless of how they love, how they pray, what they look like. Clearly, we are a city that welcomes everyone.
Well, this brings the community together, and it also really shows that we have progressed as a city. There's still a long way to go, but we are moving in that direction. And being the first out LGBTU citywide official, I am thrilled.
By coming together, by being proud, and by doing it with purpose, we are going to change the world.
There is never going to be a perfect world, but we have a job to always make the world a better one, step by step by step.
And we owe it to all of those 13 countries in the world where being gay gets you the death penalty.
In a time where still the LGBTQ+ community is being threatened, we're saying here in San Pedro along the port, you are welcome, your love, we're here to celebrate you.
It's been an inspiration to change the difference in the community, and here we are enjoying ourselves.
This is the place to be for sure, and I'm sure this will be the place to be next year.
The city also sponsored a Pride event in South LA hosted by council members Herb Weston and Marquise Harris-Dawson. Anna Marcos takes us to the block party where everyone was welcomed with open arms.
The Our Pride South LA event celebrates its third annual party, and although it focuses on the LGBTQ and trans community, organizers say everybody's welcome. The colors are everywhere, and what's not to like? Kids of every age are drawn to the rainbow hues.
I identify as a gender queer, non-binary person, meaning that I don't identify with either sex. I'm gender fluent.
Who they are is not only okay and acceptable, but it's something to be celebrated.
We live in this community, and I'm so happy they're doing something to support everyone and all of us.
The party and the people at this annual Pride Party in Baldwin Hills are homegrown, but the event is sponsored by city leaders Marquise Harris-Dawson and Herb Weston.
Today, I want to have fun and just hang out with a lot of people that I know and love, and we're going to have a good time tonight.
It's important for the LGBTQ community in South LA, in the African-American community, to be out, to be proud, and to be in a space where we can all embrace them.
Visibility is very important.
And while fun and rainbows abound, the tables and booths highlight the many serious issues that face the trans and LGBTQ communities. They provide resources and information.
We're the only think tank, national think tank focused on ending the HIV epidemic in black communities.
I'm from Zimbabwe. For me, being a trans woman of color, coming from a country where I was not able to be myself, being here in a group, being able to help other people who were once in my situation, it's important to me.
We just take the time to care, just a little bit, and point a kid or a youth in the right direction, it could change everything.
This diverse community keeps diversifying with ever more gender fluid trends and more families and children becoming a part of it.
There's a place for people of color and families of color and gay families and our little gabies to go and celebrate Pride with each other. It's really lovely.
Happy Pride!
I know that being both black, gay male parents, that we can successfully raise a great kid like this.
Happy Pride, everybody!
Volunteer teachers from Thailand are honored. Dash buses get some extended hours, and Chevy Chase rec goes green with new trees. All this in City B.
Councilmember Paul Krikorian hosted a very special presentation honoring Wat Thai, the first Thai Buddhist temple in the United States, in the city with the largest Thai population outside of Thailand. Wat Thai has been sponsoring volunteer teachers to visit Los Angeles and share the beautiful culture of Thailand to students at the facility. It's a very special place because it is a place where their culture is preserved, where their language is preserved. The LA Department of Transportation has a few new reasons to take public transportation and leave the car at home, as the Dash Downtown will now provide extended service until 9:00 PM on weekdays, weekend service on neighborhood and downtown routes, and earlier weekday service on neighborhood routes. But that's not all, as commuter express is also getting extended service and will accommodate residents of Playa Vista and El Segundo with the Route 437B and Route 439 lines respectively. For more information, visit ladot.lacity.org. Chevy Chase Recreation Center in Atwater Village saw the planting of 19 new trees thanks to councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, the Department of Rec and Parks, and community members. The new Greenway will give the park a new look as summer kicks off.
We're going to plant 19 trees as the first phase of our tree planting, both in the park and in the perimeter, and then we're going to install lighting.
Bread, it's a beautiful thing, right? Carb lovers, you gotta check this out. We take you to the fifth annual Bread Festival at the Grand Central Market. You're welcome.
This is the fifth annual Los Angeles Bread Festival at Grand Central Market. This is the first year that we're holding the market in the brand-new lower-level event space. We have over 13 vendors from all over the Southern California area. We've got breads, breads, pastries, jams, anything you can think of, we've got it here today. We really like these kinds of markets. They allow us to talk to people on a really natural, just, you know, candid level about our business.
Great, because, you know, it gives the opportunity to show a variety of different themes that we don't know and we're going to learn about. We just go to the store and buy packets of breads all the time, and we just don't know really about it, and this is the opportunity to show what entails.
I came to try out new things like the bread here. I tried out the jelly over there. It's really good.
Come down to Grand Central Market today, get yourself some bread.
Get ready to dance under the stars with Dance Downtown LA, Classic Cars Kickoff Independence Day, and summer's officially here with the California Watermelon Festival. Check these out and things to do.
Dance DT LA returns for its 15th season. Downtown is the place to be on Friday nights from June 21st through August 30th. Each Friday night features a different dance genre and beginner dance lessons led by top LA dance instructors. So step outside, get your groove on, show off your dance moves at Dance DT LA, happening every Friday now through August. For a listing of music genre lineups and event locations, visit musiccenter.org/tickets. The Port of Los Angeles will host Cars and Stripes Forever, a free community celebration to kick off Independence Day weekend, featuring a classic car show. Check out motorcycles, exotic vehicles, and more than 100 cars built before 1975. Throw in live bands, food trucks, and fireworks to round out the perfect July 4th celebration. Cars and Stripes Forever rolls in on Friday, June 28th, beginning at 5:00 PM at the Vincent Thomas Bridge in San Pedro. For more information, visit la waterfront.org. You are invited to a fun-filled day at the California Watermelon Festival. This year's festival boasts their largest event yet with over 60,000 pounds of fresh off-the-farm fruit, chilled, sliced, and served up fresh to you. Tickets also include a wildlife exhibit, butterfly feeding, and more. Don't miss the California Watermelon Festival, happening June 29th and 30th at Hanson Dam Soccer Complex. The complex is located at 11480 Foothill Boulevard and begins at 10:00 AM. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umayma Rashid. From all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, or also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more at LA this week.
Shake Alert LA is a mobile app that can give you up to a 60-second warning before a 5.0 or greater earthquake hits your location. When you receive an alert, it will look and sound like this. Once it's on your device, you can access more options such as Prepare for an Earthquake, Earthquake Alert Map, View Recent Earthquakes, Recover from an Earthquake. The new Shake Alert LA app will help you stay connected with LA City services when
Okay, shh. Good morning. Want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bondin, Buscayino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Smith, Wesson. Ten members present at quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves. Buscayino seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Corretz moves, and Bondin seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, items one through fifty-one are items for which public hearings have been held. Item one should be received and filed in as much as action will be taken under item forty-nine.
Okay, let's prepare to vote.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Additionally, for council's consideration, committee reports have been posted and circulated for items eighteen, nineteen, and fifty-one, and communications from committee chairs have been posted and circulated for items forty-three and forty-nine. Public comment should be taken for items forty-three and forty-nine in as much as committees did not have a quorum.
Okay, Mr. Rue?
Two and forty-nine on a special.
Hold those items, Ms. Martinez.
Mr. President, I want to call item fifty-one special.
Let's hold that as well. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Let's move forward.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will be carried over to July thirtieth unless reconsidered with twelve members present.
Thank you. Okay.
Item fifty-two is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, that item is now before this body. Mr. Buscayino?
Hold fifty-two on the table, please.
We'll hold that as well, at your request. Continue.
On the continuation agenda, item fifty-three is an item noticed for public hearing. There are cards on that item.
Then we will hold that as well. Continue.
Additionally, on the continuation agenda, items fifty-four through fifty-nine are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. If you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, I've been told that items eighteen, nineteen, urgent forthwith, so let's vote on that. Eighteen and nineteen? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, would you like to start the day off? The floor is yours.
Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, everyone in the chamber. Monday is July first, so we're getting an early start to one of our Heritage Month celebrations. And today, we recognize July twenty-nineteen as Muslim Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles. We are joined today by friends, including Francisco Ortega from the HRC. Welcome, Francisco. Welcome, everyone. And I think we can put a little more energy into the excitement here, right? The Muslim community promotes brotherhood, sisterhood, community, diversity, and strives to embrace all cultures. The state of California has one of the largest Muslim communities in the United States, with the majority of Muslims living in Los Angeles. Southern California is home to over one-hundred-and-twenty mosques. Islam is followed by approximately one-point-six-billion people worldwide, encompassing every major religion, every major region, rather, of the world. The Muslim community in Los Angeles, through charitable contributions, community groups, social activisms, provide support and assistance to citizens throughout the Los Angeles area. The Muslim Heritage Month celebration will promote and encourage awareness of the significant contributions made by the city's Muslim brothers and sisters in culture, social services, education, politics, business, technology, and the arts. Our established annual traditions, here at City Hall, we have established them to celebrate iftar and Ramadan every year. In two thousand and fifteen, we held the first-ever Religious Pluralism Day. Rabbis, imams, priests, pastors, ministers, the unaffiliated, our own HRC. It was a proud, memorable day here in Los Angeles and in this building. It was one of those special, special days here. Today, we honor a few standout members of the community, starting with Deborah Hassan. Deborah Hassan is Director of Operations at the Center for Advanced Learning Public Charter School. So, Ms. Hassan, please step forward. There we are. Deborah Hassan is a native of Los Angeles, California. Currently, she is the Director of Operations at the Center for Advanced Learning Public Charter School, which was in attendance of, has an attendance of three-hundred-and-sixty-one students and forty-eight staff employees. Deborah Hassan is instrumental in initiating and planning outreach programs and fundraisers. Deborah Hassan is a devoted Muslim in her community, revered and loved by many. She is respected for her dedication, devotion, commitment, and her hard work. But before Deborah Hassan speaks, we want to give her the Certificate of Recognition, which is here. Wrong one? So how about a big round of applause for our first honoree, Deborah Hassan?
I'd like to thank the council and the community, Najee, for this award. I am honored. Thank you very, very much.
Sometimes, people who say the least do the most. Our second honoree, Donald Baker Bakir, I'm sorry, Donald Bakir. Donald Bakir is a Muslim pioneer and activist for over fifty years, and is the Board Chairman of Project Islamic Hope, a civil rights group based in South L.A. Bakir is a Vietnam War veteran, who began his teaching career after his military service ended. He was an educator at Washington High School and other L.A. U.S.D. schools for over thirty years. He's also an accomplished poet and author, whose acclaimed novel, Crips: The Story of L.A. Street Gangs, from nineteen-seventy-one to nineteen-eighty-five, was adapted by famed producer and director Oliver Stone into the cult classic film, South Central. Bakir is the past president of the International Black Writers and Artists, author of ten books, and has starred in four plays, appeared in three movies. He's been married a total of forty-three years, and father of fifteen. If ever there was a Renaissance man in L.A., it is Mr. Bakir. And we present you with this certificate of honor on this day, Mr. Bakir.
Auzubillahimine Shaitani Rajin. I would like to thank all of the people who were responsible for this, Councilman O'Farrell, Najee, my compatriot, and all the other council people. When I think about the heritage of Muslims in Los Angeles, it makes me proud. I mean, I've seen such growth, you know, all the way from the horrible incident with Ronald T. Stokes back in nineteen-sixty-two. There have been some great names associated with the growth and development of Islam in Los Angeles, like Ali Rashid, who was a dynamic organizer, Imam, for us, and the man to my left, who is forty-seven years of leadership at Bilal Islamic Center, Imam Abdul Karim Hassan. Then there are others. There's Sister Miriam Shabazz, and many, many others, who are much more worthy of honor than myself. But I could not help but use this platform to try to enlist you in a movement that I want to start. The movement is to end homelessness. I think that we I think that we who live in a city that has literally thousands of million-dollar homes should take personally the homeless problem. We need to stop walking past homeless people and not feeling anything. Not, we need to feel individually responsible. I mean, we should at least try to buy one meal a week for a homeless person. One meal a week, ten dollars a week. Don't walk past them and, you know, look over them, look through them, you know, when, in the Quran, it says, Allah will not change the condition of a people until they change what's in their hearts. So, let's change our hearts. Let's soften our hearts for homelessness.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bakir. Our third honoree, Jareen Islam. He is the CEO of Giving Help. Jareen is a proud Muslim, mother, wife, I think I just said he, I'm so sorry, and Angelino. Jareen is currently the CEO of Giving Help, as I mentioned. She graduated from the California State University at Northridge Seasun, and was the former president of Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council. She is a community activist and a strong community advocate, whose leadership has brought key resources into the community that she volunteers for. Jareen has helped the community navigate the city government to ensure that things get accomplished. She's been the strong voice in the community, carrying her Muslim identity proudly and apologetically. She is fearless in fighting for what is right. She is motivated to ensure that we have a just and equitable society. Jareen is joined by her family today, including her children. She is also a mother on top of everything else. So, Jareen Islam, congratulations on this great honor today.
First of all, I feel humbled and grateful to be here and have this privilege. I want to thank the City Council for celebrating the Muslim Heritage Month and celebrating the contributions the Muslim Americans have made since the day they were brought here on ships chained. Let's not forget our heritage. We celebrate our heritage, we celebrate our culture, and we celebrate our Muslim identity. Because our Muslim identity is what has taught us to fight for what is right. Our Muslim background is what has taught us to fight for our homeless brothers and sisters. Our Islamic faith is what taught us to fight for those migrants at the border right now and separated from their families, those children. That's my Islamic faith. That's what teaches me to fight for them. My Islamic faith teaches me that I wish for my brothers and sisters what I wish for myself. If my brothers and sisters are not taken care of, then I cannot take care of them. It is only through the service of people that we service God. So please come and join us and be advocates in your community so that we can have real change and have a just and social society where it's equitable and just for everyone, and not just a few who make the rules. So please, thank you for this honor.
Thank you so much. And before I present the certificate acknowledging the month as Muslim Heritage Month, I want to acknowledge again Project Islamic Hope and my, our good friend, Najee Ali. And I also want to bring forward before, before, I'm going to ask Najee to say a few words too, but I'd like to bring forward Hassan Ilush, Executive Director of the Council on Islamic Relations, otherwise known as CARE of California, to say a few words.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the American Muslim community and Muslims in Los Angeles, the great city of Los Angeles, I want to thank Councilman O'Farrell for hosting and sponsoring this Muslim Heritage Month. And I want to thank each member of this esteemed council for recognizing that we're all one. Everyone here contributes in a positive way. At a time when we feel the normalization of hatred in our country, we witness the growing number of hate incidents, hate rhetoric targeting various minorities, from migrants to workers to religious minorities, racial minorities, attempting to divide us. It is extremely important for us to recognize the beautiful diversity of our cities and our country. And it's beautiful to see that this heritage is being recognized. So thank you for that. I remind myself that it is more than just recognizing that diversity, but working on establishing it, strengthening it, and preserving this harmony and justice. So please continue to do the good work on our behalf. And I would remiss if I don't recognize, I see the hall full today with many of our brothers and sisters from the labor movement who struggle for equality. So, I want to thank all of them, each one of them, for ensuring economic justice for all of us. So thank you, brothers and sisters, for your struggle. Thank you, and God bless you. And thank you, and congratulations to the honorees.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Ilush. I mentioned Project Islamic Hope, ILMO Foundation, the Islamic Center of Southern California, which is in the thirteenth district, which I represent, an incredible, an incredible organization, CARE of California, which you just heard from, the Muslim Public Affairs Council, and of course, our own Human Relations Commission. Now, earlier, I mentioned our friend Najee Ali, CEO of Project Islamic Hope and the founder of Muslim Heritage Month. Najee is a friend to all of us. He, we know him, he's at City Hall. He's always advocating for justice and fairness and equality across the board. Talk about someone whose heart and soul is always in the right place. I am honored to consider Najee I am honored to consider Najee, in a way, a spiritual guide for me because he's such a beautiful soul. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce, to say a few words, Najee Ali.
Mr. President, honorable members of the City Council, I'm grateful for Councilman Mitchell Farrell for making sure that our community was recognized for Muslim Heritage Month. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Councilman Karen Price and Councilman Bloomingfield, who aren't here, but they actually helped get this started a few years ago. And William, on Councilman O'Farrell's staff, did a great job, put his heart and soul. So I want to thank William for all your hard work. And I'm going to keep this short, but as a Muslim who lives here, we are in solidarity with humanity. So speaking personally, I don't care whether you're white, black, Latino, Asian, Native American, LGBTQ, it don't matter to me, you know, we're about humanity. So I'm saying that right now, we're about the people. So, and, and, and in my closing, as someone who lives in San Pedro now, I love it, my Councilman Joe Busciano, my wife Lisa, and daughter Journey are here, and I'm going to say this, it's my own personal opinion, we stand with labor, no, we stand with labor. So, when we fight, we win. 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 So, thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. We love y'all.
That was wonderful. That was wonderful. So nothing more needs to be said. Therefore, I'd like to commend the Los Angeles Muslim American community as it continues to move into the mainstream of civic life across the city and looks forward to sharing the beauty and the diverse cultural traditions of Muslim Americans with our fellow Angelinos as we declare July 2019 as Muslim Heritage Month. We are all one people. Thank you.
One more round of applause. Well done, well done. Welcome home, Tom. Let's take up item forty-nine at this time. Do we have the... So let me call up, I have one card on this item. It's from Mr. Herman. Sargent, if you would allow.
Yeah, I heard, bro. It's all about the communication. No longer a communication for the mayor, because I did a background check on Ms. Denise, and I followed the protocol and the guidelines under a significant portion that could be understood very well. Dennis versus the United States, Yates versus the United States. And in the following, I found out how far the nigger was going, yeah? That is what we're going to say regarding our nigger, Ms. Denise Varette, as the Director of Zoo Department. Because I plan to save America. Let's go back to constitutional betterment, bury the niggers, Brandenburg versus Ohio, U.S. 395, 44 Supreme Court, 1969.
Your time has expired. Your time has expired. Okay, let's move on from that lunacy and let's get Ms. Varette to come on up. You know, it's an honor. It's really an honor to have you here today. I know a little bit, a little bit about making history. And I'm so glad to be seated in this chair as you make history on this day. You have worked hard, you have been the blood and the bones and the skin that have kept that, the zoo together, and we're just so pleased that at this point in time, we're going to have an opportunity to make you the woman in charge. So with that said, I want to turn it over to Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. And today is a great day. And Denise, I apologize for, but you're well aware of the unfortunate First Amendment rights, but I'm sorry for that tirade, but thank you so very much. This is a historic day. And I just want to say, Mr. President, colleagues, that when we were choosing a general manager for the zoo, the choice was clear. There were many, many qualified candidates, but only one that stood far above the rest. And Denise, I could not be more pleased with the mayor's nomination to have you at, and have you here for your confirmation. You're a brilliant leader and someone who's deeply committed to animal welfare. And during your nineteen years at the zoo, over twenty years at the zoo, you've demonstrated a commitment and incredible understanding of animals, care and conservation, as well as showing the ability to get things done. Your nomination as the General Manager of the L.A. Zoo marks an important history and history, important history in the zoo and our city. And as the council president has stated, with your nomination and I vote today, you will become the first African-American woman to lead a major zoo in the United States. Now, it's very important that we recognize this because of all the little girls and boys who come to our zoo every single day will see your leadership and be inspired to become But I also want to state, this nomination is historic in many other ways as well. The zoo, the L.A. Zoo is at a turning point. We are at a metamorphosis and a resurgence of a new zoo. And your vision for that zoo will transform it to a center of animal care, conservation, and sanctuary. That will be that national model for all other zoos in the 21st century. And, and for my colleagues here and for the public to hear, I know we talked at length about the visioning of the zoo and where you see the future of our zoo going towards animal conservation. I just want you to share a little bit with everyone here what you foresee the new zoo to be.
Thank you so very much. And let me just say that I am beyond humbled to be here before you all, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity. The Los Angeles Zoo, for a long time, has been a leader in conservation, and everyone's been aware of the California Condor Program. More recently, I worked with the Peninsula Pronghorn and the Mountain Yellow-legged Frogs. But we have an opportunity with the Vision Plan to transform the zoo to be able to be even more committed to conservation through innovative exhibitory, through conservation breeding programs and release programs. This Vision Plan will evolve the zoo into something that is very uniquely Los Angeles, something that everyone in this community can be proud of for our conservation ethic, for our community engagement, building strategic partnerships and collaborations in order to everyone to be a part of the mission, working hard every day to save animals from extinction. And I'm very excited about the opportunity to do that.
And we are so very excited to working with you to transform our zoo to a sanctuary for all of the fourteen animals, fourteen hundred animals. And, and, and not just for our attendees, but also for the animals themselves. So thank you so very much for that. And I think there's no one else who is more capable or leading our Los Angeles Zoo, and I look forward to working with you. And I know there's probably other colleagues who might want to speak, but I do encourage, and I see no reason this wouldn't be a unanimous vote, an I-vote, to confirm you as our next zoo director. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Mr. Rue. I think there is nobody else with your experience and with your dedication and your capability. And I believe that your focus will not only be on conservation, which is important and which the zoo has already done well, but I think your focus will also be on animal welfare. I think that is absolutely critical. I have not found the zoo always to have as much of that focus as they should. And as you know, I'm probably the zoo's biggest critic. And I believe that you have a great vision and a great plan for moving forward with the zoo. And I look forward to working with you to achieve some great things in the next few years. So I am a strong supporter. It's also exciting that you're the first black woman in a position like this, but you could be an old white guy, and I still would have supported you.
I think her husband is glad that she's not.
I am going to guess that as well, but I, but it is a nice cherry on the top of the whole package that you actually will, will break new ground in that way and lead the city through a, a, a great step forward for the zoo. So I encourage everyone to support you. I'm sure we all will, and not just with a unanimous vote, but a very enthusiastic unanimous vote.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Corretts. And absolutely, animal welfare will be my highest priority because great care has to equal great welfare, and that's what we will be striving for every single day. And I'll be looking for your support as I move forward with an animal welfare framework that will be my top priority for the zoo. So thank you very much for your support.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the pleasure of meeting Denise a couple of months ago, and there was no doubt in my mind that you were the best fit to lead our Los Angeles Zoo. But more importantly, I think I took away your passion and your real commitment to make sure that the Los Angeles Zoo is a real destination for people who come and visit Los Angeles. But the takeaway from me was your commitment to Angelinos to ensure that all families, no matter where they come from, who they are, their background or their economic status, had an opportunity to actually be able to afford to go to the local zoo. And you have a real commitment to ensure that EBT cardholders are able to have a reduced rate entrance rate to be able to attend the zoo. Is that right?
That is correct.
I mean, you are committed to making sure that all sectors of our city have an opportunity to actually enjoy this amenity.
Absolutely. Of all, by all, we will be welcoming to every single person in this city and this greater Los Angeles area because we are a community resource, that we want everyone to feel value and feel welcomed, and that is our commitment.
That's right. And so one of the things that I want to just express about Denise is, you know, so oftentimes I talk about, there's a lot of great women doing all the work behind the scenes, and I think you're an example of that. And it is about time you're giving the respect and the title that you deserve because you've been doing the work at the L.A. Zoo.
Thank you so much, Ms. Martinez. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. President, this morning, we are making history. Denise will become the very first woman ever to be appointed to be Director of the Los Angeles Zoo. You will be the first person of color to head the L.A. Zoo, and you're going to be the very first African-American woman to lead an AZA accredited zoo in the nation. So I just want to make sure we take note of that.
Thank you so much.
Because I am definitely, I am very proud of you, but I want all the little girls in our city to recognize this woman who's making history today and look at you and say, I can do that too.
Thank you so much.
I want to also, and the last thing I want to say, because I know you are the woman of, of, of the day this, this morning, but I also want to recognize that you and your husband are part of our city family. He is a sergeant in our South Bureau, Sergeant Varette. Can he please stand up with L.A.P.D.? So this couple is, you know, have been doing so much for our city, and they're public servants, and I just wanted to recognize their contributions to our city. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Well said. Well said, Ms. Martinez. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Denise, I've had the great honor and pleasure of working with you for six years, and you've been the GM in waiting for that entire time. And you are so prepared for this job. And here's what you bring. In addition to everything else, you bring this depth, this depth of care, this depth of caring for animals with your humane approach to animals and striking that balance with how they're exhibited and how we also share the value of the animal world with the general public. And you bring the depth of that like no one I've ever met before. And this morning upstairs, when you said you won't recognize the L.A. Zoo after I'm done, I think that bodes so well for animals and people. And I think as our zoo director, you are going to not just be the first in the nation, but I think you're going to set the tone for the rest of the zoos, especially here in Los Angeles, where everything we do, people pay attention to. So I think you are leading the movement to pioneer new ways in how we care and exhibit our animals. And I think you appreciate that at the, at the spiritual level. It comes across, it always has. So I couldn't be more delighted. And your animal welfare framework is exactly the mindset that we have needed at the L.A. Zoo, quite frankly. And I hope that you will do this and be in this position for a long time because you have a partner in me to support all of your pioneering efforts on bringing the L.A. Zoo up to the world-class standard that it will inevitably reach because of your leadership. I couldn't be happier with your appointment. Congratulations and Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember O'Farrell. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's do this. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have twelve members.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have 12 members, and I know we have a few items that need to be reconsidered. Would you walk us through those quickly?
Yes, Mr. President. Items three through six, those orders can now be reconsidered.
Okay, let's first vote on reconsideration on those items three through six. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now, we'll actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Okay, listen how move to item 52. We're gonna, Mr. Buscagno, I want to make sure that we are on the same page here. We can take 20 minutes of public comment on this issue, but I'll defer to you. How would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. President. How many members of the public?
We have a lot of cards, so I think 20 minutes ought to handle the lion's share of it.
Very good. Appreciate that. So, first and foremost, I want to recognize the hundreds of longshore workers who have joined us here in council chambers. Now, I know, I know many of you missed work to be here. Many of you were pulled away from families to be here and from your kids to be here. Many of you actually just got off of work, Laura, 3:00 a.m., and came straight here. So, thank you for being here. This is an important issue for you, for the people that I represent, for the city and overall this country. I also want to thank those who are listening and tuning in live on Facebook, the Overflow Group, who are on the South Lawn as we speak. They are listening to this item that's before us. And the reason why we are here today, colleagues, is because this matter is of great importance, not just for the harbor area, but for our region and our country. And today, I want to discuss about the future, our future, right? And whether we are going to stand on the sidelines as observers and allow a valuable way of life and a valuable workforce to be decimated. And what we have before us is a terminal operator that has applied for a permit to bring in automated equipment to the Port of Los Angeles, impacting hundreds of jobs, and I believe this merits a broader discussion before this council here. Now, this, this action, the action by the Board of Harbor Commissioners to approve this permit was a vote of three to two.
Mr. Buscagno, I'm sorry. Shh. Could just close the door then, somebody, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Go, go ahead.
So, the, as we all know, the Board of Harbor Commissioners approved this permit at a vote of three to two. And I know it was a difficult one because I felt they didn't have all the information in front of them. I recommend that we hear, that we hear the evidence, and that then we decide as a body if we believe more information and discussion is merited and therefore provide more time for the port, ILWU, APM terminals, to discuss further and reach an agreement that improves the situation for all parties involved. And for me, as I told you all, this is personal. This is clearly personal. When I was on the phone last night at 10:30 talking to my team in preparation for today, my son, Mateo, turned to me and said, "Dad, what's gonna happen? What's gonna be the decision?" And then he turned to me and said, "What's gonna happen with B.C. Donnie? B.C. Anna? Uncle Jerry? Uncle Casey? What's gonna happen to our cousins Joey? Tommy? Our cousins Nay and Jesse? Our cousin David? My aunts and uncles, he asks? What's gonna happen to them? What's their future?" And then he named friends. And then he named friends of his family, his friends that their parents work at the docks. "Dad, what's gonna happen to Faith and Daisy's parents? To Gwyneth's dad? To Tone and Matt's parents? To Ella's dad? And Michaela's parents, Dad? What's gonna happen to them?" So, the reason why we're here today is because this is a matter of great importance. This is not about the importance of, yes, moving on automation and making sure that we protect the workforce, but we must be a city and a country where technology creates jobs and not kills jobs. And we, and we as a city cannot use public lands to kill jobs for our city and our region. Colleagues, we refuse to be the next Detroit. You've heard that before. So, hell, yes, automation is an important issue that impacts my family, my friends, the people I grew up with in town, and it impacts my constituents. And that's why, colleagues, I ask for your "I" vote to assert jurisdiction so that we can properly, as a body, hear evidence. We can hear evidence and decide as a body if this matter needs to be remanded back to the Harbor Commission. So, Mr. President, I ask that we hear public comment, and I would like, if you're okay with this, sir, to start off with, two of our neighborhood councils who are here, they have submitted a community impact statement, and at this point, I'd like to ask those two members, Shannon Ross, representing Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council, as well as Valerie Contreras, representing Wilmington Neighborhood Council. Is Valerie here? Please come forward.
That's who we'll start off with.
Thank you.
Please come forward and take a seat. Who'd like to start?
Okay, I'll go. City council members, my name is Shannon Ross. I serve as an executive officer on the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council. I'd like to thank council members Buscagno and Bonin for bringing up this concern and the rest of the council members for hearing this important issue. I stand before you today to tell you that our community is scared. We are scared of the impact the loss of good-paying jobs will have on our local economy. We are scared that small business owners will lose their businesses and turn laying off their employees. We are scared that our property values will drop. We will see mass foreclosures and an increase in homelessness in the area. I am scared because my husband works on the docks. If he lost his job today, I do not know how we could afford to pay our mortgage. Sorry. These jobs are important to everyone, not just union members. Our entire community will be egregiously impacted. Council members, I ask you today to stand for labor, stand with the 50-plus legislators who are supporting this labor action, all the local neighborhood councils who are supporting and standing with labor, and the Los Angeles County Democratic Party, who is also taking a position to stand with ILWU labor. Please join them and urge the Harbor Commissioners and the mayor to take action. Please help us save these jobs.
Now, you're up.
Hi, I'm Valerie Contreras. I'm with the Wilmington Neighborhood Council. Thank you, Honorable Chairman Wesson and every board council member here today. I have served on the Wilmington Neighborhood Council for three years. I am a proud ILWU member for 30 years, and I've come in here to advocate on behalf of my community and my strong union. This is the resolution that we filed, and I have a copy for each member. Thank you. Reference is City Council Action, Request to Assert Jurisdiction Over the Board of Harbor Commissioners, June 19th Action, to Deny and Appeal on the Coastal Development Permit Number 1825 and Refer It Back to the Port Commission. Honorable Wesson, Chairman Wesson, and the council members, on February 27, 2019, the Wilmington Neighborhood Council filed a resolution on behalf of the stakeholders and labor. It was submitted to the Board of Harbor Commissioners through the council file system. The resolution urges the Harbor Commissioners to table the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit 1825 until an agreement has been secured between the terminal operators and ILWU union dock workforce. On Tuesday, April 16, 2019, the Board of Harbor Commissioners held an appeal hearing on the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit 1825. In attendance were over 1,500 ILWU members, local politicians, community leaders, residents, and business owners, all in support of labor. The mayor sent a letter which supported labor and asked the Board of Harbor Commissioners to hold off on granting the permit to APM terminals until they talked to the union about securing our jobs. L.A. Supervisor Janice Hahn, Councilmember Joe Buscagno, State Assemblymember Mike Gibson, Congresswoman Annette Barragon, Senator Bradford, and many other upstanding, strong leaders support labor in the oldest industry of trade. On June 19, the Board of Harbor Commissioners approved the Permit 1825, and the ILWU appealed the approval. We know that automation is coming, although we prefer that it would not come. We are simply asking that they hold off on granting this permit for automation until they come to an agreement with the dock workers who helped build this great port of L.A. A large majority of the dock workers live here in the port where the port started its humble beginnings. With the help of Phineas Spanning, Los Angeles and the port were connected. The port was to give back to the community by securing jobs to local residents. The union and the terminal operators have always worked together for the good of the U.S. global economy and global trade. For foreign-owned, this foreign-owned operator is not upholding the longstanding policy. This will have a huge effect on the continued growth of the port. It is the experience of the labor force and terminal operators who have together grown the world-class port. What happens here, the largest man-made port in the world, will affect all other ports in the world as they watch. The very people who gave their lives building this port and now are being driven out by the jobs, driven out of their jobs by greed. We already have enough homeless due to job loss. All we ask is for, that they come to an agreement to secure the jobs. These terminal operators are generating billions of dollars. It's only fair that they give back to the people of Los Angeles. Please support the hard-working class of Los Angeles, and please assert jurisdiction over the Board of Harbor Commissioners, June 19th Action, to deny an appeal on the Coastal Development Permit 1825 and refer it back to the Port Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Buscagno, it's my understanding, there's another neighborhood council?
Yes, sir. Thank you. If we can call up Danielle Sandoval, who is representing the Harbor City Neighborhood Council, who, too, they also submitted a community impact statement. And Danielle, thank you so much for being here.
Let her in, Sergeant. Please have a seat.
My name is Danielle Sandoval, and I am the president for the Harbor City Neighborhood Council. The Neighborhood Council passed a resolution in February and made recommendations to the Harbor Commission for consideration and called for action and tabled the permit and vet out all of the facts. Did they do that? No. We were ignored. The community was ignored. Frankly, we were disrespected because we are the voice of the community. The resolution that was submitted pointed out that the Clear Action Plan Community Advisory Committee made a recommendation in their third-quarter report to do a comprehensive analysis on the impact of the local economy before implementation of automated machinery in the port. At the recent Harbor Commission meeting, Commissioner Renswick stated, "It is not our job to evaluate whether APM is making a good investment." I strongly disagree. As a seasoned Neighborhood Council budget advocate for Region 12, the harbor area, it is our job to evaluate the city's budget and make recommendations for the annual white paper. Taxpayers and shareholders of this city are, in fact, should make that determination if automating our port is a good investment, and it is not. About 10% of the port's revenue goes back into the city's general fund, and if APM begins to lose on their investment, which they will, then we are faced with another obstacle. We, as taxpayers, will have to once again bail out another greedy corporation in the 1%, and that's a fact. There's no need for me to ask how we would like you to vote. You already know the answer to that. But as a wife, a mother of a third-generation, longshoreman, Local 13, I am proud to say that our taxes sustain this city, and we want to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't we set the clock for about, we've already had 10 minutes, and why don't we do another 15 to 20 minutes for public comment? Just let me say this to Mr. Buscagno quickly before we begin the public comment. I have the highest respect for anybody in the city that would volunteer to be a commissioner, so I respect the work of the Harbor Commission. But sometimes, we have to let people know that we are elected, they are selected, and it is important. It is important. It is important that we do the job that the people hired us to do. And people, at times, may not believe this, but we are in the people business. That is our job. So, I think that I can say without any hesitation or pause that I... that I, ILWU, and Mr. Buscagino, we got you. The Duncan F. Santiago, Sadio, Santiago, Sadio, John, Bogakis, I'll butcher some of these names. Susan Shannon, I got that one. Rich Dines, Rebecca Lee. If I've called your name, please come up, come to the center aisle. Don't worry about order. If I've called you, just come on up.
Good morning, council members. I'm Susie Shannon. I'm the California Political Director for Senator Bernie Sanders, and I'm here to read a statement on his behalf in support of ILWU and the workers at the dock. I write to join my brothers and sisters at the ILWU and over 50 legislators in expressing concern about the permit approval process for the coastal development permit for APM terminals. Approval of this permit would allow cargo workers at the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach to be replaced with automated cargo-moving equipment resulting in the loss of thousands of good-paying jobs over the next 10 years. I respectfully ask you to take action to stay this permit. Additionally, I urge you to make every effort to ensure that all environmentally upgraded equipment is zero or near-zero emissions and is operated by a human being. The health, the health, safety, and well-being of cargo workers cannot be ignored or swept under the rug. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Thank you, President Weston and honorable members of council. My name is Rich Dines, and I am a former harbor commissioner at the port of Long Beach. I support the motion and ask the council to ensure no lease extension is approved for Pier 400 before the current lease expires in seven years. The minimum manual guarantee at Pier 400 is only $145,000 an acre, when comparable terminals in the port of Long Beach are paying $270,000 an acre. APMT only pays $80 million a year in rent, and they should pay $130 million a year in rent. Over the last 17 years, the issue, this lease, has cost the city and the port hundreds of millions of dollars in lost revenue, including $50 million this past year alone. If the Board of Harbor Commissioners is allowed to approve this permit and extend the lease of Pier 400, they will not be fulfilling their fiduciary responsibility to the city and its residents. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Adriana Bruckhammer Flores, Rebecca Lee, John Kieran, if you get in line. Sir, please state your name and go ahead.
Thank you, council members. My name is Santiago Sadio. I am a substitute teacher with LAUST and a member of UCLA. I am here on their behalf to say that we support you, our ILWU brothers and sisters. And council, please don't let them take away hard taxpayer workers' jobs. Not only that, but bringing automation support will make us more vulnerable to cyberattacks, and we cannot afford that here in L.A.
Identify yourself.
Okay, Honorable City Council President, esteemed City Council members. My name is John Satisius. Today, I don't come before you as an executive board member representing the ILWU. I come before you as a concerned citizen. During the process of APMT seeking a Level 1 permit, I've become somewhat of an expert on the issue due to the hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of research I've done on this. Today, I'm putting a letter in your hand, and you received it earlier, that I addressed to the councilman, Joe Buscagino, yesterday. In this letter, I bring up two very important concerns. The first is antitrust issues with this terminal. If this project is allowed to go through in its current manifestation, it will be a violation of antitrust. The second is Prop 65 issues. I have included copies of the letter to all council members, and I can be reached at the following numbers, and the email address is on top. If you have questions, you can call me. I want to say thank you very much for hearing me, and God bless the ILWU, and God bless you, too.
Identify yourself and welcome.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Lee. I'm with Ground Game Los Angeles and Sunrise Movement. I'm asking the city council to stand with the ILWU and with working people. I speak for the Sunrise Movement when I say that we won't tolerate appointees of the Garcetti administration who exploit the public sphere of climate change in order to justify corporate greed. Stop gentrifying environmentalism. Maersk is greenwashing automation, preying on heuristics and emotion much in the same way as the mayor's flashy, yet hollow version of the Los Angeles Green New Deal. Real climate justice protects labor. It creates jobs. It protects jobs, and it makes the air safe for those workers to breathe. The choice between labor and the environment is a false choice, and we need a real Green New Deal in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
This is Victor Martinez, sir.
What was that?
I want to thank all the council members here, honorable council members, and yourself, President, for giving us the time to speak. I am a local citizen in the San Pedro area, born and raised, and a real estate developer with a real estate license. I'm coming to you today on the facts. The facts are that this permit has not been done correctly, and we have two commissioners that I thank today for making the right decision and pointing them out. Commissioner Perosi and Commissioner Middleton for their research that was done. I want to thank Mr. Joe Buscagino for bringing us here to the council and allowing us to continue this fight, which is very, very important. And like you said earlier, it's a history day today. We're here making history. We're taking care of the rights of the people. And as a citizen, I'm asking you to make the right decision. I believe you already done it today with the comments of the president, saying that he's behind us. So as you are being behind us, continue to stop this permit and do the things that need to be done the way they should be.
Thank you.
And get the permits done correctly. Thank you.
If we could get Wendy Toledo, maybe, Gary Herrera lineup, and Sam Pedro and Victor Martinez. Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Gina Martinez. I was the first one who signed up. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak here, honorable council members and President Weston, and thank you, Mr. Buscagino, for putting the motion in play today. Nobody is disputing that global trade is vital to our economy and that we shouldn't embrace emerging technologies. However, what is being overlooked is never before has a project of this magnitude taken place where we're going to give up so much of our shoreline to a foreign national company on a wireless network. I ask that my city council members, please have National Security Agency and Homeland Security weigh in on this effort. Our coast is vital to our protection. I ask that it be explored. How feasible and how wise is it? We don't know who will have access to this information if they give a blueprint of our ports to a foreign company who might have rogue actors. I'm not saying that's the case, but it should be explored.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Good morning, honorable president and city council members. My name is Vivian Malauulu, and in addition to the proud tradition of the white hat that I'm wearing, I also have the privilege of wearing other hats in our community. I'm also, I sit on a college board, and I'm a commissioner. But today, I stand before you as a wife and a mother and a worker. And I'm going to ask for audience participation here at the port of what?
I-.
It's the port of Los Angeles. And we are here to petition that you remember that. And I'm really happy to see the executive director of the port of Los Angeles here, Mr. Gene Soroka, because in addition to remanding this issue back to the harbor commission, I'd also like to ask that the master plan of the port of Los Angeles be reevaluated to make sure that the workers and the community is protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Adriana Bruckhammer Flores. I just wanted to say I am a community member, a mother, a homeowner, and third-generation longshoreman. I urge you guys to take this matter seriously. It affects more people than just us workers. This is a long-term project. It's detrimental to the effects of our local community and economy. Also, no one's brought up the fact that they may very well be using 5G technology, which is a huge health concern for not only humans, but for marine life. I feel that needs to be explored more if it's going to be utilized in our ports. Also, Janice Hahn expressed a concern of port security, like the previous lady said. I also would like to bring up the facts of how we're talking about the loss of tax revenue. Let's say 500 people are displaced from their jobs. That could cost us $9 million in federal taxes that you guys will lose, $3 million in state taxes that will be lost, $3.5 million in social security tax, and $1 million in Medicare tax. So just make sure that you guys really take this into consideration. The Level 1 permit that they requested is not filled out properly.
Thank you.
They need a Level 2. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would please identify yourself, sir.
Hello, my name is John Kieran. I'm a member of Sunrise Movement L.A. and Ground Game L.A. I'm here to speak in support of this motion, in support of union workers and their communities, and against corporate greed. Mayor Garcetti recently released what he called a Green New Deal for L.A., which is anything but. Aside from its inadequate goals, it promises no protections or guarantees to workers. If we want to start on the path to a true Green New Deal that prioritizes working people in frontline communities and puts their voices first, if we believe in the right of working people to decide their own future, we cannot allow APM terminals to dictate what happens and destroy jobs for a few dollars more in their overstuffed pockets. We stand with ILWU. Thank you.
Identify yourself.
My name is Rebecca Newey, 135851. I'm a mother of five. And they're all standing, set up, kids. Those are my kids, all ranging from the age of 10 to 15. I should be a statistic. I'm 36 years old, and I should be a statistic. But because of this job, this livelihood, that allowed me to put a roof over my children's head, I'm not. So I ask you guys, I plead with you guys, to stand with us and show the world, be the example to the world that we will not be replaced. Robots cannot replace human beings. So stand with us, please. I'm pleading. And be the example to the whole world that they cannot replace human beings with robots.
Identify yourself.
Thank you very much, sir. My name is unimportant. I am, however, my name is unimportant. I do happen to be the only elephant in the room, probably, because I'm a Republican. And so therefore, I'm here to say it's not a partisan issue to support the ILWU's position. I support the position of the councilmen of the 15th district. I urge the members of council to look at Los Angeles beyond even this port. You are the largest port, of course, in America, but you're at the epicenter of the global economy. The economy is about to fundamentally change. For the first time in humanity, we are getting a new ocean. That ocean is going to be used by these ships, and those ships are going to be measuring what is happening at Maersk right now. So this is not a 3 to 2 jam-through decision. This should be a very good decision by the members of the second-largest city in America to say, "We're going to stay the biggest port."
Identify yourself, please.
Good morning. My name is Wendy Toledo. I'm a resident of the city of Wilmington. I also own a pet grooming business called The Pets Choice located in Wilmington. I have three children in school in Wilmington. My husband is a longshoreman. I am here this morning in support of the customers who work for the port of Los Angeles. The port of L.A. is the number-one port in the United States thanks to the hard-working men and women of the ILWU who break records every month and every year. If a good chunk of these worker jobs are replaced by robots, the local economy, city, and county of L.A. is going to be rapidly declined, and it will be a ghost town in our surrounding South Bay cities. I have a great concern for the thousands of casual longshoremen and women who are part-time workers. They feel this blunt of forced automation, possibly even hundreds of families being homeless. Hundreds of people will be homeless if they don't have these jobs. I humbly ask to please reconsider the issue, give relief to the workers, and deny foreign companies the power to displace workers with robotic machines.
Thank you. Next speaker. And before you start, I think I can take another speaker. So is this Sherry Lopez? Sherry Lopez. Paul Sanchez? Are you Sherry? Okay, you'll be the last speaker. Okay, identify yourself, sir.
My name is Pedro Magaña. I'm a casual, part-time worker at the port of Los Angeles in Long Beach. Okay. Automation is a race to the bottom. Once corporations get what they want, then who will buy their goods? When people have no jobs, who will pay their rent? Who will pay taxes? Who will pay the family healthcare? Automation isn't only cutting costs, it is also cutting the family structure, cutting their financial security and placing them in danger of homelessness. Automation will cost many times more in the long run. The day that the damage is done will be the day the government will see what a social disaster automation really is. Automation is replacing the human factor, replacing us. The machines will do the work because they will be permanently installed in the job site, but us, the people, will be permanently left in the streets. Listen to that. There's no way around it. Robots should not replace humans. The government needs to set limits on automation and guidelines that consider the negative effects on the surrounding communities. Communities are what drive the community. The people are the community.
Okay, Sherry, this is the last speaker. Is it Ms. Lopez? Are you Ms. Lopez?
Yeah.
Last speaker. Guys, you're going to have to trust me on this one. Go ahead. Come on.
I'll be brief because I don't want...
No, you're fine. You got your minute. Go on.
My name is Sherry Lopez. I own a small business in San Pedro that does taxes and insurance. I want to tell Joe thank you for what you're doing today. On behalf of Dave Arian, who has inspired me to be here and who fought the fight and who we will continue to fight the fight. Robots do not pay taxes. People do. Robots do not buy insurance. People do. But more importantly, it's the families that are being affected, and we see them on a regular basis, who are devastated. They're, Joe, when your son said what he said to you, that includes my granddaughter. My son-in-law is a casual. He has aspirations of being in. We don't know where this is going to go. We're begging you, on the city council, to take the human aspect, not the robot aspect, and follow the money. We're not sure what this corporation pays in taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Thank you. You've got to trust me here. All right. So I want to go to Mr. Buscagino. We're closing the hearing. We go to Mr. Buscagino. We'll hear from the members, and then I want to take up the vote. So where do you want to go now, Mr.?
What we're going to do, Mr. President and members, we're going to vote now on asserting jurisdiction over the Board of Harbor Commissioners, and then we will hear from the appellant directly. And then we'll take a second vote with hopes of getting the support of vetoing the decision rendered by the Port Commission. So at this point, we will now open...
Because now we're going to vote on taking jurisdiction.
Correct.
And then we'll have a debate where the council can be engaged. So with that said, Madam Clerk, if you please, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
So with that...
Okay, Mr.?
At which point now?
Mr. Buscagino?
Thank you, colleagues. At which point now, we would bring up, I believe, Gary Herrera and John Bogakis representing the appellant to speak on 10 minutes, five minutes each. They are representing the community.
Before Mr. Buscagino, let's let the city attorney jump in.
Yes, this is the fair hearing item portion, and I'd like to remind the members that you need to be in your seats and pay attention to the speakers while they're at the table. And if you're not looking at the table, please view the monitor that's in front of you. Thank you.
Okay, guys. Who wants to start? Go ahead. It'll be, just keep talking.
My name is Gary Herrera. As many know, I am the vice president of the ILWU. But more importantly, I'm here today as a 46-year resident of San Pedro in the harbor area. And first and foremost, I want to say thank you for your votes and your confidence in people, your confidence in your city, your confidence in the future of our kids and our children, your children, to give them an opportunity to have a voice, to have a life, to put a roof over their head. As you guys made a statement here today... As you guys made a statement here today, I want to say thank you. Maersk has come in here, and they filed for a permit. And it's kind of hard to keep going, knowing that you guys already voted yes. But I want to tell you, the permit as written—
We've got one more vote.
And we're going to convince you to stay on that. That permit as written had many flaws to it. They talked about it had minimal impacts to the community. As you heard many testimonies today, even from our councilmen, there's major impacts it's going to have on the community. Unlimited automation at the port will eventually destroy thousands and harm to the greater community. Transitioning the largest terminal on the country's largest port has significant impacts on the port and the surrounding environment. Part of what they want to do is put in 5G. We have a bird sanctuary there that's federally protected. What are we going to do about that? We're going to protect those federally protected birds. But more importantly, what are we going to do about the humans? Read about what's going on with 5G. We don't even know, yet they want to put it in there. The cancer risks are phenomenal, but they don't care. This is a foreign company that's coming in here. They leased the land from the landlords of the port that are owned by us, the taxpayers. Facilities such as the port are public resources that must be held in the trust for the public good. The residents of the port cities and the citizens of the countries that traffic international trade should derive some benefit from their public infrastructure. The residents must ensure the conservators of these assets allocate a portion of the prosperity generated at the port for the people of the community of the state. The corporations that are pushing for humanless automation are all foreign-owned and don't have a stake in our community. They are displacing American jobs while their country and their corporation benefit at the hard workers here in our communities, in our state. Technology is supposed to enhance our lives, not eliminate it, and we heard that from our councilman, Joe Buscayeno. We support clean air, as you've heard testimony. We can drive these machines that are zero emission, but their only goal is to get rid of labor. Their only goal, as we sit with them in continuous talks, is to eliminate us for their own profit. It is not to do good by the community, or the port, or the state, or the country, or for us humans. This is a direct attack on the middle class and the surrounding communities. Depriving people of their economic and social right to adequate center of living is wrong. So we're asking you today to send it back to the commissioners, allow them to understand the facts that were presented to them in the last one, and understand that being here in Los Angeles, in California, today is about history. You said that, President. And today, we heard that it's about the people. We heard that it didn't matter who you are. Those robots do not pay the taxes. They do not go out and vote. We do. We elect you. They don't. So today, as our elected officials, I want to say thank you for taking a stance for humankind. And I want to give the rest of my time to a business owner and a man who I respect, John Bagakis.
John?
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Gary. My name is John Bagakis. I'm the managing partner of Big Nick's Pizza in San Pedro. A lot of pizza fans behind me. I see the City Attorney plaque there. I was at a luncheon a couple weeks ago with City Attorney Führer, and he asked me, what's the best-selling pizza? Easy answer: it's called the longshoreman. I'm here speaking to you today as a small-business owner and representing many small-business owners in the community that are concerned about automation and its effect on our local economy. I employ 52 people that support themselves and their families in our community. If the local economy suffers, the community suffers. Less money spent in our stores and restaurants equals less money for our businesses to use to sponsor local Little League teams, to sponsor the San Pedro City Ballet, to give to our local Boys and Girls Clubs, nonprofits, donate to our teachers who are on strike, or give to students who have earned perfect attendance. There have been economic studies in recent years that show a large percentage of locals leave the Harbor area for work, coming downtown, Orange County, wherever. Small businesses have struggled to survive over the years. We rely on these workers behind me who support our small-business community every day. The Harbor area is the most unique and perhaps unknown treasure in the city of Los Angeles. In years past, it was home to a thriving canning industry and fishing industries. My grandfather came to this country and was a fisherman. Today, fishing boats are basically just memories for those of us who can remember them. When you drive down the 110 South and see those cranes come into focus, you get a glimpse of the heart of the communities of San Pedro and Wilmington. The people who work on the docks are truly the lifeblood of the Harbor. It is disheartening that we are facing this issue now, when we are on the verge of major economic development in San Pedro and Wilmington. The San Pedro Public Market, Banning's Landing, the revitalization of downtown San Pedro, and the Little Italy of Los Angeles project, all in the works. I would hate to see all this development surrounded by a ghost town of empty storefronts. In my business, technology and its advances help make our job easily—I'm sorry, easier, more productive, and more importantly, safer. Better ovens, upgraded computer systems, and third-party ordering systems allow my business to produce more in a faster time period, which in turn equals a busier store and more employment. Delivery drivers can now save our environment by using an app for customers to sign for credit card receipts. These advances in technology are vital. However, it cannot, will not, and should not ever eliminate the human factor. When I came into council chambers this morning, I saw the video play with all the districts, and it introduced all the councilmen. When it showed Council District 15, it showed the water. And that water belongs to the people of Los Angeles and the state of California. I'll close with a quick story. Every year, I attend the—this is true, there is a pizza convention in Las Vegas every year. And every year, I attend it because we look for ways to upgrade. How can we do better? What can we do better? This year in March, I went, and I walked past a booth, and they had a mechanic machine making pizzas. I've never seen some—yeah, yeah. Pouring sauce, actually picking up the dough and putting it in the oven and taking it out on the other side. I was never more disgusted in my life than to see that. And I will never, ever eat something like that, and there will damn sure never be anything like that in my restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We keep it down, and we can get to the other vote. Mr. Buscayeno, what I'm going to do now is I want to recognize members of the council, let them speak. I'll then go back to you in hopes that you will ask for the vote. At this point, let's let the gene just cool his jets. Let's hear from our other colleagues at this moment. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Buscayeno and I would also like to call up Commissioner Middleton. We may have some questions for her as we speak, if that's okay.
Okay, well, you can do that if that's what you want.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today is a tremendously significant day for all of us. We all, all of us, love our districts. I don't think anybody expresses his palpable love for his district more than Mr. Buscayeno does. And I'm proud to be standing with him today. I love my district. If there's a very close second, it is his district. Because it is where my family is from, it is where my in-laws are from, and for me, this is personal as well. The people here in this audience are the people that I spend holidays with, that I attend cookouts with, that I celebrate with at weddings, and that I mourn with at funerals. This is real. This is a very, very big issue. This is a big issue for this country. It's a big issue internationally. It's existential for this community. But on the merits, on the technicalities, this is actually a very small issue of the permit. And I want to argue that on the precise points of it, because Commissioner Middleton at the commission did an exceptional job of that. And I want to make sure that in our record, we're also including everything that the commission discussed in their hearings. I want to move that that actually be inserted into the record. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So of the issues of the permit, Commissioner Middleton argued—and I'm going to ask her to elaborate on this a bit—that this permit was issued or is being issued in error, that it does not qualify for the type of permit that is being issued. It should not be a Tier 1 permit. It should be a Tier 2 permit, because in any number of ways, this permit is in violation of the port's master plan. And Diane, would you like to comment on some of the specific ways that it does? I'm happy to do so as well, if you want to chime in together.
Members of the council, CDA 25 is not in conformity with the port master plan for the following reasons. And I'll be glad to give you all the specifics and the sections, but in the interest of saving time, let me briefly say, it's vague and ambiguous, it's a conflict with community and small-business stakeholders, it will lead to reduced productivity, and it will lead to a tremendous loss of revenue to the Port of LA. It is not good business for the port. Furthermore, it will have significant adverse economic and environmental impacts. Now, I'd like to point out, I'm not here speaking on behalf of the ILWU. I'm speaking as a commissioner and in support of my community, and what I believe my obligations are as a commissioner. And first and foremost, is this land is public land. We own it. It is not a medieval fiefdom for Maersk to dictate what's going to happen. And that's what's happening. When you said, how is it not conforming with the plan? We were told by staff that the commissioners could not consider economic impact, that we could consider environmental, but not economic. But I would submit to you that Maersk has only submitted one issue in terms of why they want this permit: economic impact. They want to eliminate longshore jobs. So why can they look at economic impact, but we can't look at the fact that if we lose 500 jobs a day, 400 bucks wages and benefits minimum, 200,000 a day, a million a week, $52 million is going to be lost to our little towns.
Thank you.
Wrong.
Thank you, Diane. For the record, I want to be very specific about some ways in which this violates the master plan. Section 6.3 indicates that the application needs to provide sufficient details. It does not supply sufficient details. This application actually cannot specify. It says it did not actually look at what the economic and job impact would be for the port and for the community. Now, that is, as described by another commissioner, absolutely preposterous. No one believes that APM didn't know or does not know exactly what the impact is going to be on the jobs. It is the exact reason they are doing this, to eliminate jobs. Section 6.42 says that these permits for Tier 1 are supposed to be minor in nature. A complete total automation of the biggest part of the biggest port in America is hardly minor in nature. APM will argue that this is no big deal, and they will argue that they are doing this to protect the environment. As one of the first local elected officials in the country to endorse the Green New Deal, I want to call BS on that. That is absolutely false. If there was ever a case in a place where this should be a just transition—
Michael, watch your time.
It is this. Could I have just two more minutes, Mr. Weston, please?
Don't you—I'll let you end it. You know, so let me go, because we've had people—in fact, two more questions. I'm going to go to the next member. If you need to talk more, just push your button again.
Okay, then I'll press it again.
Okay, Mr. Corretts?
Let's see if I can get a mic. There we go. I understand that the ILWU's contract allows for the introduction of new technology, but I view that as somewhat of a bait and switch. Because in 2015, when the contract was signed, no one, much less the longshore union and its workers, knew what the quick pace of the evolution of technology would be. It wasn't that long ago, we were just hearing concerns about Amazon workers and their warehouses. Now, half those workers have been replaced by robots. I'm worried that the same thing will happen to our dock workers. I know ILWU has estimated that around 500 work opportunities a day will be lost to driverless vehicles, and I think that's just the beginning.
It is.
No one was anticipating that this contract would violate our ILWU's livelihoods of our brothers and sisters in the union. And no one was anticipating that San Pedro and the surrounding areas would be devastated. And there is a bigger issue of allowing automation to devastate our whole economy. When Uber and Lyft go driverless, not only will a few people be killed on the streets of Los Angeles—not a big deal, right? But a few hundred thousand people will lose their jobs. And what's going to be next? It's been said that robots don't pay their taxes. Well, if we think homelessness is bad now, think about a future. And homelessness is bad now in our best economy. Imagine 15 to 20 years from now, and we face something like 50% unemployment, because we've allowed automation to take over everybody's jobs. That is our future if we don't take a stand. We have to take a stand, and this fight begins today. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Mike, for leading this fight. I want to let you know, I'm 100% behind you all the way. And I believe this council is 100% behind you all the way. This is a fight for our future, and we're not going to take this lying down.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Middleton, thank you so much for taking the righteous course and voting the way you did, and standing up for workers at the port. Mr. Buscayeno, thank you so much for leading with conscience on this very important position that we must take, because if we don't act, look where our future is headed across the entire country with automation. And, Mr. President, we are in the people business, not the global conglomerate business. You know, Maersk's profit—their quarterly profit was $1.25 billion. That was their quarterly profit in the most recent earnings report. And, you know, innovation must improve working conditions, not eliminate the workforce. And I think we have to get away from the entire way that Maersk and other major conglomerates are framing the conversation, that in order to innovate, you must eliminate workers. That is a false pretense that we must not ever accept. That is a false pretense that we must not ever accept. And to the young mom with the five children, I see you right there. You could please stand up. I want to speak directly to you and say, you do not need to plead with us. We are with you. Thank you.
Gilbert?
Gilbert.
Mr. President, thank you very much, Mr. Buscaino. I, like all our colleagues, applaud your leadership today, your courage, your commitment to your community. Let me say to you that the choice for us is simple. It's a question of jobs or automation, workers or robots. There are certain things that we can control and certain things we can't control. My father's factory closed. He was a steelworker at American Can Company. We didn't own the property, and we couldn't stop the factory from moving. This is different, though. We own the property, and we have location. There is not another port, there is nowhere else for them to go. And so the choice is easier for us. You know, I was a union leader once, and... In the county of Los Angeles, and this is the choice that we're making, in the county of Los Angeles, if you go to court or you get called in on some matter, there's a court reporter there. Now, that court reporter used this technology from 1880. That's right, 1880, not 1980, 1880. Now, this conversation can be recorded, and somebody could be anywhere in the world listening to what we're saying, with exact precision, with a transcript, real time, and knows exactly what we're saying and doing right now. So there's not really a reason for there to be a court reporter, except for one reason: that the union I represented made a choice to protect the jobs of these middle-class workers who work in the court and make sure that they can live with dignity and respect, and that those recordings are there, and those workers are there, each and every single day that there's a matter that comes before the court. That's because our union chose jobs over automation. That's a choice that we have to make. And that's the choice we have to make today. It's very simple, Mr. President, I'm going to wrap up. It's very simple. You've made a very cogent case that bringing in automation results in reduced productivity and adverse environmental impact and an adverse economic impact. The adverse economic impact for us is the most prevailing. I respect that the union may have negotiated a deal. I appreciate it, I respect it. It's a difficult job to be a union leader. You're confined by certain obligations, the previous contracts, an employer with great aggression on you, and it's very difficult, I will say to you, the rank and file. But we, the council, have a different duty. Our duty is to look at the bigger picture, the economic impact. It's a minimum two and a half for every job you mention, two and a half other jobs are impacted. The $52 million you mentioned is impacted times two and a half. The impact on the community will be devastating. We know that. And so today, it's very simple. For us, our duty is to stand with the ILGWU. Our duty is to serve the people. Our duty, the first step, as I always ask my staff, what's the first step? I share the goals and the objectives, but what's the first step? And our first step today is to choose jobs, to choose shared prosperity, to take jurisdiction, and choose a future where everyone in this city can be treated with the dignity and the respect they deserve. I thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Bonin, you can continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I got no rhythm when I sing and no rhythm when I dance, but I got a little bit of rhythm when I speak, and you got me right as I was hitting the crescendo. So I was pointing out that, you know, MERSK is arguing that this is about the environment, and I was saying how that was BS. If MERSK really cared about the environment, if APM really cared about the environment, my husband and his classmates would not have grown up in the shadow of that port with asthma. If these shipping companies really cared about the environment, they would have been doing things to improve emissions and making sure that the public health impacts were reduced decades ago, and they did not. You know, there are folks here today from the Sunrise Movement, from DSA, from Ground Game, from LA Forward. They're here in solidarity to say that they understand, as this union knows, that an injury to one is an injury to all. They and we and you know what's going on here, is that they are actually trying to divide us. ILWU has been a union that has always been great about forming coalitions. They are trying to divide us by saying, "It's the environment versus jobs." That ain't true. They can do a lot to improve the environment. They can electrify and still have cabs on there that can keep your jobs, and they know And they're dividing because the forces of international capital are trying to concentrate wealth, and they are trying to screw you over. And this is a battle that is symbolic of what's happening around this country. It actually, the way this happened exposes sort of a bias in our system, not just at the port, I'm not singling out the port, but the bias in the economic system in this country. This was presented as something easy, something that was minor, something that was not controversial. This is fundamentally profound and existential for this community. This is a community where, a couple generations ago, someone lived in poverty, and because of jobs, good-paying jobs, ILWU jobs at that port, they were able to earn a living, they were able to buy a home, they were able to send their kids to college. ILWU and the port is one of the last remaining examples in this country of where the promise of upward mobility is real, and this is an attempt to undo that, and we cannot stand. Now, the system says that, oh, we have to approve this. The system says this is the law. The system and its bias has actually tried to quiet some of the voices in favor of ILWU, whether they're elected officials or not. That is not going to happen, as you can see here today. I argue, I argue that not only is it not a matter of law that this permit has to be approved, I think it's a matter of law that this permit must be disapproved. This permit is in violation of the port master plan. I think this permit is in violation of the trust that this commission holds, the port holds, Mr. Buscaino and the city holds, and the community holds, over the Thailand's trust of this being public land. For all those reasons, this needs to go back to the commission and be reconsidered as a Tier Two permit. It needs economic analysis. The Port Master Plan, Section 1.3, says the point, the objective is to integrate economic, engineering, environmental, and safety considerations into port development processes for measuring the long-term impacts of varying development impacts on the port's natural and economic environment. That must be studied. Now, I'll tell you why they don't want to study it, because they know what the answer is. They know it means you're screwed. They know it means the death of San Pedro and Wilmington and Harbor City. And they don't want that information in the record, because they'd rather claim after the fact, well, it was involuntary manslaughter, not first-degree homicide. Well, it's first-degree homicide, and when we do the study, we'll know it. Last thing I'm going to say is, in the very rich history of ILWU, there is a day that almost everybody in this room knows: Bloody Thursday from 1934, back in the days of the legendary Harry Bridges. On Bloody Thursday, striking workers were killed as part of an attempt to organize and grow labor's power at the ports. The commission voted three to two to approve this permit on June 20, which was a Thursday. That is another Bloody Thursday unless we reverse it today. And as everybody in this room knows, that Bloody Thursday was the real birth of the power and the energy of the ILWU, and a huge day in the labor movement in this country. And what happened on June 20th, and what's happening today, is going to be the rebirth of that. We are going to send this back.
Mr. Buscaino, to close, so that maybe we can really hear some yelling and screaming when we take the vote.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to my partner, Mike Bonin, well, not my partner, but you know I love him, but my partner, you know, my other one. My fratello, my hermano. So, colleagues, before we take the vote to reject the Port Commission decision, just know that before, what was circulated was a resolution in support of Assemblymember Mike Gibson's bill that would authorize a state lands commission to approve the use of automated technology on the property of coastal ports on a case-by-case basis, taking into account the impact automation will have on local and state economies, as well as amending motion that will call for a blue-ribbon commission that will seek the business community, the port community, the labor community, on ways to address automation and how it will impact our local, regional, and national economies. And that is the amending motion before you. So I also want to thank Port Commissioner Anthony Peruzzi, who is here, who also voted Now, let us remember, he was on a family vacation in Italy, in his parents' hometown in Ischia, and called in to ensure that his voice was heard on behalf of the community. So thank you, Anthony, as well. So, colleagues, from what we just heard, and what our Commissioner Middleton just stated, there clearly is a lot of the pieces to the puzzle that need to be figured out. In my understanding, that discussions are currently taking place between all parties, ILWU as well as MERSK, and I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that they will reach an agreement and resolution the next few days or weeks. But in the meantime, we cannot let this permit go ahead until a resolution has been reached. So that's why I ask that we vote and veto the harbor commission's action and remand that back to the Port Commission Board. I ask for an I vote.
All right. All right. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. All right, guys, congratulations. Good work done by each and every one of you that came here today. Now let us continue with our agenda, and again, congratulations. In fact, let's take up item two. Hey, guys, if we could keep it down. I do think we can vote on item two at this point. Let's open the roll.
And, Mr. President, on item two, an amending motion has been posted and circulated, so the item is as amended.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay.
And that ordinance will be carried over to July 30.
Mr. O'Farrell.
We already voted on item eight.
Hey, guys, wait, wait, wait one second. If we could...
Shh. It's real easy. Item eight forthwith, please.
Without objection.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, there are also requests to send item 43 and 50 forthwith.
Okay, let me call, do we have Peggy? Mr. Spindler, that is your first and last warning. Let me get Peggy Lee Kennedy. Eric Previn, please come forward. We're on item 51.
Item 51.
Yes.
Thank you for letting me make public comment. My name is Peggy Lee Kennedy with the Venice Justice Committee. I have considerable historical knowledge regarding homelessness in Venice and the West Side. And what I don't have, I have a partner that has, but I'm going to tell you about what happened last Friday. While Lasa was driving up and down the boardwalk in an SUV, the sanitation and LAPD were taking an unhoused African-American man's belongings. He was in the bathroom, and he came out and found all his belongings taken. I tried to negotiate a blanket for him, and they treated me like there was something wrong with me. And there's nothing wrong with me expecting a person who lives on the street to have a blanket at night. And that's the kind of really inhumane behavior that I have seen for years.
Thank you. So, Mr. Previn, do we have Bahar? I think the last, or Bahar and Chris Roth, I know Chris. Adam Smith, please come forward and call your name. Please, identify yourself. Yes.
Yes, hi, I'm here to address a concern in regards to...
Identify yourself.
My name is Bahar Padi, and I'm here to address a concern in regards to what's happening to the unhoused population in the Venice Beach neighborhood, but in really, in life as a whole, it seems like, when it comes down to it, we have wrong priorities. When we consider that commodity always seems to outdo the community's rights and well-being, we don't have a humanitarian society, and we really need to take this into consideration. If we don't, if we don't protect the rights of the vulnerable, it's our own self that is being damaged. We don't understand the connectivity of life and tap into that and value that as the highmost, and always have a commodity, violence, segregation, bias, and cruelty towards the vulnerable, we will never succeed. It doesn't matter how much money we earn and how much property we have, health is priceless. And this health goes into psychological and various sectors of life, and humanitarian is at the heart of it. It's devastating to see this. Please consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
And, excuse me, Mr. President, as the speaker comes forward, there are amending motions for item 51, and those are posted and circulated for council's consideration. It's 51A and 51B.
Thank you. Go ahead and...
It's, oh, I guess it's afternoon now. Good afternoon, council. Thank you very much for the motion that you just unanimously passed regarding the port of Los Angeles, and thank you for considering the amendments, I understand, who have been introduced relating to this motion. It is critical that we ensure that the Los Angeles Police Department is not continuing to victimize the folks who are on the streets right now when they're being part of the sanitation sweeps that are going through these neighborhoods, and displacing folks, just moving them around like it's a game of whack-a-mole. It does nothing productive for the good of the community. It is contradictory toward the stated goal of daily sanitation when it comes to public health and safety, and it is absolutely necessary that we take a further look at what is going on with the... involvement of the police in these sanitation sweeps. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. Why one minute? I have more than one item, but, uh, fifty-one, I just would address. You got A and B. Now, I know Avak loves to do the amendments last minute, but they didn't look like they were just typed up, no fresh ink. And I thought I read $200,000 moving from clean harbors into some kind of LAPD sweeps. Now, sir, that is such a violation of what, this is what you guys do. You like to come down and look like you're sticking up for the little guys and the regular folk, but then in fact, what you're doing is you're sneaking around, doing bad stuff. Now, sir, is that, do you think we're not going to catch you? You don't think we know about the ACOM Hotel and the $17 million push right back to them, another? Now, that is the group that's doing Bonin's LAX. They're doing the county jail. They are so far up into the business of this city, they are the folks who underwrote, if I'm not mistaken, sir, correct me if I'm wrong, mayor's inauguration. So why are we giving them? They just weren't making enough money, upcharging us on every single thing. Are they giving us anything back for that LAX screw-up last month? No, of course not, because that was just, you know, stuff goes wrong. We eat it by sticking in line forever. And then Coretts tries to give us this $350 ticket for idling in the traffic. Unacceptable, sir. You can look at that one on item forty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Why one minute?
No, you get one minute, then I'll call you back.
Oh, okay. Have a good day.
That's on just this one item. Adam, come forward. One minute.
Good afternoon, Adam Smith, White People for Black Lives and a member of the Services Not Sweeps Coalition. We really appreciate councils, uh, a few council members supporting the idea that we don't need police in these encampment sweeps. We know, for, for those of us that go out to these encampment sweeps weekly, daily, we never feel in danger from the folks that live there, um, but we see the danger that the police pose in those situations. In March, a well-known musician on the Venice boardwalk named David Waller, um, I videoed Ray Armenta from Pacific Division harassing him trying to take this old man's chair. He couldn't walk and, uh, I took his chair and put it in my car and gave it back to him. And this is a regular occurrence for David and two weeks later, he died on the boardwalk. This is a, a public safety issue for the homeless people. We need police out of these encampment sweeps.
Thank you. Do we have a John? John, please come forward. Identify.
John Motter with Ground Game LA and a part of the Services Not Sweeps Coalition and just here to really reinforce that police do not belong on homeless outreach. Uh, I don't need a gun. When I go do homeless outreach, I do it all the time. I do in Skid Row, I do in Hollywood, I do it all over the city. Um, I don't feel unsafe there. I don't, if sanitation feels unsafe, maybe it's because they're destroying people's property and their medication, their tents, and maybe they just shouldn't be doing that. Um, I know what dangerous neighborhoods look like. I've been shot at and blown up more times than I can even remember. Um, and if someone like me has the awareness that these, uh, going out and doing outreach doesn't require bringing a firearm, doesn't require putting people in handcuffs, detaining them, uh, the city should know that as well and just remove LAPD from any kind of, uh, homeless outreach in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman? Come forward.
Yeah, thank you so much, under bubble nigger. Thank you very much for bringing this up to us. We are here from China today to talk homelessness shit. Now you deny our permit with Silver Tongue Cop. Now we have all kinds of problem. We need to clean up our sidewalk. I take lot of money. I build lot project and you put bunch of nigger in front of my hotel. You put a bunch of nigger in front of my building and we don't like ya. And I ask for translator, I don't get mandor translator, so I do best I can. Nigger up there, fuck me, give me more nigger in front of my project.
All right, you're not even on the topic now. Come on, Mr. Herman. Okay, Mr. Spindler, your time. Mr. Herman? Stay on the subject.
Yeah. Subject's about homeless outreach. Well, you can't have homeless outreach when you got niggas with guns and tasers in a club not trying to attempt to de-escalate the situation. Do you not understand what de-escalation means? Do you not comprehend? Because I seen it on numerous times, on numerous events, numerous sidewalks, numerous trains. And what do the cops have to say? Get the fuck off the train now or I'll shoot you. Get the fuck off the train or I'll drag you off the train. That's not de-escalation. Police officers are not trained psychologists. Fuck the police. And regards to how we live in the streets, $600 million you fucked up on homeless HHH. Fuck you Sacramento and fuck you Gavin Newsom.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that concludes, uh, public comment on this item. Let's prepare to vote. Let us, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And this adopted as amended.
Okay, let's move now to... Item forty-three. If I can find, yeah, item forty-three. Yeah, let me get Mr. Spindler, Mr. Herman on forty-three.
Yeah, we talk to you today for construction development corporation. We take LLC money for this to build for what? For nigger to get more labor, more community action. We want to do handiworkah. Handiworkah are people we bring in. We bring in homeless people from Cambodia and Laos. We put them in tent, work them like little bitch. They dig with hand like this, like this. That's what my father did when I was back in Shanghai, like this. So then I learn how to steal. Now we build, now we do Asian consortium. Fuck you nigger for not making us there. Fuck you nigger for FBI investigation. We want a four billion dollar now liberty to China.
Mr. Herman?
Coming, master. I'm coming, master. I'm your handyman. Look at me now, handy in the labor community action. I take a broom, I sweep your dirty fucking sidewalks. I pick up debris, I put it in a trash receptacle, but now I tell nigger I don't work. I don't want to work because nigger I got money. Money coming up my ass and out of my ass on both ends because nigger no, not work. So you see, when you say to me, I have disability, nigger, I don't work. So as long as I handyman...
Mr. Clerk, please speak on the agenda item.
Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, you're not on topic. Okay, this, Mr. Herman, you forfeit your time. Cut him off, his time is forfeit. Mr. Herman, Mr., hey, would you remove Herman, Mr. Herman? Remove Mr. Herman from the chambers. He is disrupting, he's been warned twice. Remove him from the chambers. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that brings us where?
Item fifty-three.
Fourth with on item fifty-one. Okay, so the last, uh, the item for today is item fifty...
Mr. President, I just want to note for the record that...
First of all, wait, 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 wait. Mr. Herman is still disrupting, is still disrupting this council meeting. Sergeants, help him find his stuff so that he can leave these chambers. Mr. Coretts?
I, I just wanted to point out the same thing, that he's continuing to disrupt the meeting multiple times, including while he's being removed.
Okay, Mr. Previn, Mr. Sacks? Mr. Previn, Mr. Sacks, item fifty-three. Mr. Sacks, Mr. Previn, fifty-three. Item fifty-three.
Just fifty, just fifty-three, not the general public.
Fifty-three.
All right, sir, general public, I mean, uh, item fifty-three is your, it's interesting, it's your North Hollywood Transit Business Improvement District. Now, business improvement districts are, are great for the businesses. What it is, is they, they're assessed every year and that money goes to them. And then a guy like John Walker, who we talked about last month, uh, kind of administers the security and the cleanups in the area. Ours is about six, $700,000 a year. They, in this North Hollywood, Krikorian has been boxing up things over in the media district. They have a, a robust three-plus-million-dollar assessment that they, and now the way that works is the city's parcels are kind of exempted and pay a little different. And, you know, the problem is all the folks who are not a part of the district. So what it does is it kind of aggregates nice spots around the businesses that remain clean and then areas just outside of the district get screwed, sir. And that's where they move. They move, like in my neighborhood, the Business Improvement District stops at Carpenter Avenue, but then all the way down to the metro station where we are supposed to go ride the metro, there's, there's poopy all over the place because Mr. Krikorian won't give us a mobile pit stop.
Mr. Previn, your time is up.
Yeah, but we'd like to get that mobile pit stop. Thank you.
In fact, you know what, Mr. Previn? Let me just, Mr. Previn, stay, hold tight, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Previn, do your general public comment.
Sure. My general public comment, sir, has to be pretty much discussed with the way you run the operation. Uh, at the end of the long day Wednesday, when all the council members stood up and in a reversal played the role of the blamers, not the ones who are being blamed, it was beautiful story, four and a half hours of it. But you said, sir, and it was your word we took face value, like these port workers take it face value, that everybody would be heard. But you just called up Doris Leong Gallo, Mark Ridley Thomas's former, uh, Chief of Staff, a community of friends, executive director, who you like to get photographed with because they like to work cooperatively to get the affordable, but you didn't hear from any of the other folks who waited all that time. And it was an important discussion. And that kind of betrayal, though insignificant to you, who constantly finds ways to strong-arm the folks, was really hurtful to regular people who were looking forward to hearing from about two dozen people who never got to raise their voice. And, you know, it is a historic day because we did talk about it for the first time in this council and for the first time you were honest, you didn't want to hear from the public at all.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks? We'll let you speak on fifty-three and your general public comment as well. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, uh, thank you. For the record, Arnold Ross Sacks, so you are creating a transit-oriented, uh, district, which means that you will have ability to put transit-oriented development in, which means you will be able to exceed whatever local zoning requirements are involved standing now because now it's now a transit-oriented district. Be very, very aware, if you live in that area, that you're going to have an explosion of affordable housing units if you're making over half a million dollars. Because HHH is providing affordable homeless housing units that are around half a million dollars. So if there, HHH is half a million dollars and you're in a transit-oriented direct, district, it's going to increase by about 25% the amount of housing that is allowed by your city council in a vote fourteen-zero. Public comment? You should have been at Metro yesterday. Where is Mr. Bonin? You know, the day before, that was quite a show you put on here, four hours of gasbagging. In 57 seconds yesterday, I pissed everybody off at MTA. You know why? They changed the rules again without notifying the public. They changed the public comment rules from three minutes to one and they didn't notify the public. So you know what that smells like? That smells like Mark Ridley Thomas. He did the same thing at the Board of Supervisors. So I was kind of wondering if, when the Board of Supervisors goes to Washington DC, he kind of stops in and sees his cousin Clarence Thomas, the Supreme Court Justice. You think there's a relationship between the two, Herbie? And it's nice to see you. All that discussion you had on Monday. Oh, and by the way, that is a loss of what? Oh, heck. And what happened to the other item that was held, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Spindler, come on. You speak on this item and I think he has a minute of general public comment. So let's speak on this item.
Thank you so much. To go today with this bid. Bid is big scheme. We created this in Beijing. We go and we do this all over Europe. Now we come here for nigger to do same thing, to make everything shitty. We bring shitty into nice city to become shitty and then they cry to government, "Help me, government, help me clean up needles, help me clean up."
Mr. Spindler, let's get on topic.
I talk about bid.
Talk, you talk about the topic or you can go...
I know, I talk about bid. Bid mean you pay to clean up piss and shit and needles and tents. That what I talk about. Crazy nigger, you know about that. Now I say no to this, make Paul Krikorian pay for it. Eh 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 eh.
Give him his one minute, general.
So, yes, yesterday, you brought in your star pupil? Marquis Harris Dossen went to the Metro Board and begged for money? Let's give him a hand. Yeah. But the problem is he didn't get all the money and the reason why is because you got to perform in front of the Jews to get the Jew-Jew bear money from the Jews. You know that. Now you got to go there next time, Marquisie, and you got to do like a Mr. Bojangles. You got to go, huh, I want money, I like money, I want a wrap of the money, I got to go to the Benjamins to get my bitches, I want to be the bucket full, I want to be the full. That's right, because I'm here to entertain your ass. That's right. I'm your Uncle Tom, you're my Aunt Auntie and I want all the Jew money. I want all the Jew money for all my projects. Next time, fool, know how to do it, I know how to beg and I learned from Eduardo.
Thank you, okay. Now we're, now, now you're disturbing, so go sit down. Let us vote on item fifty-three. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And that ordinance will be carried over to July 30th.
Sean? General public comment?
Yes. As you know, I'll be moving out of CD2 tomorrow. Why? Because your management raised my rent. I got a suggestion. Do not move to law, do not move to, to their apartment buildings because I'll tell you something, they don't treat you well. They treat you like a piece of shit like they did me. That's why I moved to Canoga Park. They, they're hung, they rent, they kept raising my rent. They don't care. Oh, we, oh. They don't want, they don't want to hear, oh, you lost your job. Oh, you got, they don't care about that. So I say to law, so I say to your management, F you.
Ms. Kennedy?
Peggy Lee Kennedy, um, the estimated number of vehicle dwellers more than doubled this last year in Los Angeles. I'm guessing it's much higher than the 16,000 that the, is in the count. And this council votes to put in an outrageous amount of restrictive street, uh, signs, um, including into the green zones of 8502 to remove vehicle dwellers from our streets. It's inhumane when there is maybe 1% of that number in safe parking spaces right now. Not, and also these so-called green zones are ridiculous because they have valet, park... And also, these so-called green zones are ridiculous, because they have valet parking or metro bike racks. People are living on the street. You cannot put up a street sign over and over and over. There's tons of them you put up today in Wilmington, and these people are worried about becoming homeless, but you're shooing the vehicle dwellers to where? Who knows where? You don't care? Just put up more signs!
Thank you. The next speaker is Maiku. Is that person still here? If not, David Ross? Nope. Michael Laduka? Apparently not here. Zach Strasters?
Hi, good afternoon. So, it's been a busy day, so thanks for having me, and I'll keep it really brief. There's a 2,500-foot oil and gas setback that's coming up, in just the same way that we discussed the San Pedro and Wilmington issue today. There's, was a little bit more about mechanization, but kinda this undercurrent about oil and gas jobs, refinery jobs, port jobs, a lot of it has to do with this 2,500-foot setback. When this vote comes up, just remember, hundreds of thousands of jobs are still at stake, even though that vote may have gone to protect a particular geography, there's still a philosophical issue at hand, which is, how do we kinda prepare this industry to move forward? Drastic, immediate measures and regulations that cause immediate knee-jerk reactions within industry will have a real effect on hundreds of thousands of people. So, moving forward, let's come up with amiable terms, so we can make sure that the industry is prepared for a smooth transition into renewables. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Wilkins. Is Mark Wilkins here? Apparently not. Bahar Badai?
You know, I'm kind of really confused about the structure of the society, and I understand that there's a change that really needs to happen from, from within, within the heart of the people, because it's called, it's called "we the people," it's called a place for justice, it's called a place that will nourish you based on your human rights and grant those things to you and let you be heard, yet you see so much militancy, you see so much toxicity, you see prisons being filled, you see worker wages that are, that are not fair, you see constant moves that are towards the kleptocracy of a government that's based on worshiping wealth and money as, as, as an ideal. And, and we, we tend to just keep these masks on, maintaining that this is actually really helping us, it's to our benefit, but it isn't. None of these robots, and none of the zoos, and none of the police state structures are helping us at all, and I don't know what it's gonna take, I come and talk and speak in public all the time, but we need a very deep...
Your time is up, thank you. The next speaker is Anthoy Tapia. Apparently not here. John Motter. Apparently not here as well, so that is all for public comment. Madam Clerk, where are we on the agenda?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
And the desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Announcements? If not, if we could stand for adjourning motions. Mr. Sidio, I know you have an adjournment.
Members. Members, let me, if I may, tell you a story as a way of introducing a person who just passed away this week, very important to our city and to my district. In 1994, we were involved in an effort to defeat Proposition 187. I was the head of Local 660, and that was the headquarters for the activities around Southern California. I was employing a young man named Lloyd Monserad, who later on worked here for many years, and the young woman Christine Soto, I had hired them to focus on organizing the youth of the region to oppose Proposition 187. We kept hearing about these sisters at Belmont High, the Miranda Sisters, everybody kept talking about the Miranda Sisters, and what great organizers they were. And as you recall, during that time period, tens of thousands of young people walked out of their schools in opposition to 187. Of course, we were not successful. It prevailed, it was a different time in the state of California, and shortly after it ended, we had our board meeting, and at Local 660, this woman walked in with her family and friends from the community, asking what we'd do next. The woman was Mauricia Miranda Flores, born January 7th, 1944. She was the mother of these young women, and she had trained them to be community organizers. We saw a packed boardroom today, but in that time period, in the early 90s, the packed boardroom was led by the United Neighbors of Temple Boldry, and Mauricia Miranda Flores was their leader. She was an indigenous Deppewan woman from Nayarit, Mexico, and she was the mother of nine, including my former staffer, Edis Miranda. I ended up hiring her daughter, who worked for me for over a decade. Her other daughter, Olga, is the leader of the Central Labor Council in San Francisco. All her children are engaged in community affairs. Mauricia, single-handedly secured during that time period the largest amount of money, capital, from the Clinton administration to create low-income housing right west of the freeway. This is the plan that's referred to as Central City West, it was before us just recently. But during that time period, we didn't know what the future looked like, but we did know and find out that ultimately, with her leadership, she secured, as I said, the greatest investment in affordable housing. She was a fixture during the late 80s and early 90s on picket lines, fighting for workers' rights, immigrant rights, for students' access to higher education, for dreamers before they were noted to be dreamers. Mauricia is a mother of nine. She, we lost her this week, and although she is lost, she is survived by her children, Francesca, Carlos, Juan, Monica, Iris, Elizabeth, Olga, Gabriel, many grandchildren. Her son passed before her, Junior, but she is also, has left behind a community that I represent, in that Temple Boldry area, that is organized, that is fierce, that fights for their rights, that knows that poor people have a voice in this city, and we heard it today. But long before we heard today's voices, we heard the voice of Mauricia Miranda, and we will miss that voice, sorry. I thank you very much, and ask that we close in the memory of Mauricia Miranda Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. And Mr. O'Farrell, I believe you also have... Yes, please, so, please add Mr. Rue onto...
Thank you, Council President, I just wanted to also join, and thank you, Council Meridio, for bringing that forward. I mean, I know her daughters very well, because I met them through you. Back when, I remember I was in college, you were the first elected official I ever met, and Iris was your first... And you, and Iris was one of your first staffers, and, and she was a tremendous friend, and I know she was a tremendous support for you, and of course, her sister Olga, who, I mean, throughout the years, has been, you know, equally as amazing, and, and it's no shock that they are who they are because of their mother. And, and I'm just so much in grief for them, and, and I thank you so much for adjourning in their, in her memory today, and, and I'd like to join on. Thank you, Mr. Sidio.
She's daughter of you as a son, you know that, and her daughters see you as their younger brother, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. And now, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you so much, colleagues. I wish to say a little bit about a very, very important, I would call him a lion of his community, who passed away suddenly on Monday, without any advance clue of any kind, no sign of illness. And his name is Edward Villarreal Hunt, or Ed Hunt, as we all always knew Ed. Edward lived a robust life with an almost 50-year marriage to his beloved wife, Martha, who, after just four days, is able to stand with us today. He had many life experiences, including being, being an Army Ranger, an architect, a landscape architect, and a community activist, and that term does not adequately describe Ed Hunt. He was so much more. Ed was involved in the community in many capacities. He was chairman of the Melrose Hill Neighborhood Association, a member of the Friends of the Hollywood Central Park, a board member, a former member of the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council. And beyond just being a member of the Hollywood Central Park, he is often and righteously credited with the idea of actually putting a park over the 101 freeway, directly adjacent to Melrose Hill. Edward had a fascinating, complex, and brilliant mind, truly a great loss to all of us and to the Los Angeles community that he served for many decades through his activism. You know, I refer to him as a lion. All of us know that in our communities, we have lions and lionesses who are demanding, they, they help keep our feet to the fire, they give us really great ideas. Sometimes they're very kind and gracious to us, but sometimes they're very challenging and demanding of us, and I have been mentored by so many women and men across the communities in the 13th District just like that. Ed was certainly one of them. Ed Hunt passed away, as I mentioned, just this past Monday, the 24th, of natural causes at the age of 78, while doing what he loved best, planting trees, watering, working in the garden. He'll be cremated, and his ashes will be scattered amongst trees and nature, and we know he's planting trees in heaven right now, and he's probably sending us a few emails too, because he was very active and never didn't advocate for his community, that he believed in so passionately and so strongly. And I could always, when I would see those emails from Ed, I always envisioned a bit of a sparkle in his eye as he's sending an email, because he had a wry sense of humor, and I think some people misunderstood his direct way of communicating with people as an attack, but it really wasn't. It was a request that public servants and those in public service stand up and stay active in, in working on behalf of the community, and he was a constant reminder of that value. A memorial service or celebration of his life will be held in a few weeks, haven't determined the date yet, it's just all so sudden, but, and I, and I know that Ed came from Dallas, Texas, it's not in here, but we talked about that originally, I'm from Oklahoma City, so there was a certain sensibility to his way of thinking that I really related to, always, from the first time I met him. And he is survived by seven brothers and sisters, of course, Martha, standing with us today, his daughter Lucy, who is also here, and her husband, and Ed's son-in-law, John Weedeman. He's also survived by a six-year-old granddaughter, who, who is not here with us today. But I really think it's important to adjourn in his honor, and I'm just so mindful of Ed, his, his personality, his irascibility, his, his demanding, but also, at the same time, ironically nurturing, nature. And he definitely has left an imprint in, in my mind, especially as an elected official, to never, ever, ever relax and think that you're actually doing enough, and there's a real lesson in that. So, today we adjourn in his honor, and may Ed rest in peace, and Ed, I know we're gonna be hearing from you in heaven, and we will respond. Thank you so much, and Martha, this is just a little token of, of our gratitude for sharing Ed with us, in, in a major part of your nearly 50-year marriage. Thank you so much, and may God bless.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Thank you, colleagues.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, and we offer our deepest condolences on behalf of the city, to, to Ed and his family. Thank you for being here. Other adjournments? I'm looking to my left, I'm looking to my right, I see none, so we are adjourned.
Well, I am thrilled. By coming together, by being proud, and by doing it with purpose, we are going to change the world.
There is never gonna be a perfect world, but we have a job to always make the world a better one, step by step by step.
And we owe it to all of those 13 countries in the world where being gay gets you the death penalty.
In a time where still the LGBTQ+ community is being threatened, we're saying here in San Pedro, along the port, you are welcome, you're loved, we're here to celebrate you. It's been an inspiration to change the difference in the community, and here we are, enjoying ourselves.
This is the place to be, for sure, and I'm sure this will be the place to be next year.
The city also sponsored a pride event in South LA, hosted by council members Herb Weston and Marquis Harris Dawson. Anna Marcos takes us to the block party where everyone was welcomed with open arms.
And there's bubbles, too! The Our Pride South LA event celebrates its third annual party, and although it focuses on the LGBTQ and trans community, organizers say everybody's welcome.
The colors are everywhere, and what's not to like? Kids of every age are drawn to the rainbow hues.
I identify as a gender queer, non-binary person, so, meaning that I don't identify with either sex, I'm gender fluent.
Who they are is not only okay and acceptable, but it's something to be celebrated.
We live in this community, and I'm so happy they're doing something to support everyone and all of us.
The party and the people at this annual pride party in Baldwin Hills are...